I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, Mr. Lego.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego.
You're welcome.
Okay, now entertaining motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting Monday, June thirteenth.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik, second by Mr. Leonard. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Information, Dr. Harris.
Sure, I don't have any information tonight. We had a lot of discussions last week. However, I want to remind everyone that we are now, um, well, I was gonna say we's not be, um, recorded remotely, but are we having a backup camera here too, or just in case? Alright, I just wanted to double check. And this, mics are new, and I knew last week it threw me off, so I said I'm gonna give it a couple more weeks of practice, 'cause I'm not used to speaking into the mic, so I hope I sound okay. So, thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna recognition of visitors. Bone rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed that the president, no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. Now we have one sign, Christine Snyder. Over to put it. Thank you.
My name's Christine Snyder. Um, I live at thirty Concord Drive, Irwin. I'm a, um, Penn Trafford, um, parent, and I'm a Protect PT Board member. Um, I'm asking the school district to become educated on current and proposed unconventional gas development, including fracking, pipelines, and other dangerous and nuisance infrastructure like compressor stations and storage facilities. I encourage you to go to protectpt.org to learn more about the proposed activity in our community, um, the fracking process and its risks, current peer-reviewed studies, and local and national news regarding unconventional gas-related disasters. Our group is not asking for a ban on fracking. We are asking to limit this industrial activity to industrial zones and keep it away from our homes and schools. There is a public hearing at this building on August seventeenth to finalize an ordinance that would use a mineral extraction overlay, or MEO, to allow fracking, which is an industrial activity, to occur in over sixty percent of our township in our agriculturally-zoned areas. There are currently four proposed well pads within one mile of Level Green Elementary. Each well pad can have up to five wells per pad. Um, whenever the current active well pad in Penn Township was in the drilling phase, residents were kept awake in the middle of the night by drilling noise and light for four months. Since two wells can be drilled and fracked at a time, families living near Level Green Elementary could be kept awake at night for years at this rate. There have also been multiple studies released this summer regarding the correlation between increased asthma rates and proximity to fracking wells. Parents, especially those with children who have asthma, have a right to know if the air in and around their school is being monitored and if it's safe. Another concern for parents is heavy truck traffic. I was shocked to learn the amount of water, cement, and waste-carrying industrial trucks that could be traveling on our bus routes if proposed activity goes into place. And as a parent, I'm extremely concerned about my children riding school buses alongside these trucks. The first hearing for one of these proposed wells is on September eighth at the municipal building. The zoning hearing board will hear from the gas industry and local residents, and I encourage you to attend that meeting also. I'm also asking the school district to please allow informational flyers to be tos-, um, posted on Take Home Tuesday. Um, one of the flyers that was rejected last year for Take Home Tuesday was simply an invitation for parents to intend an informational meeting to explain the drilling process to parents and how to protect their children. The role of the school district is to educate the children of the community, and I'm just asking the school district to become educated and provide families with resources to educate and protect themselves. Um, I was here in the spring, and I had some questions about emergency preparedness plans, um, but I haven't received answers. As a parent and a homeowner, I personally will be taking precautions in my home, um, if this proposed activity be, um, goes into effect, um, such as full-home, um, water filtration systems and changing our air filters on our furnace more frequently, but I don't have as much control over my children's safety when they're at school, unfortunately. Um, I'm especially concerned about, um, pipeline explosions similar to the one that occurred in Salem Township a few months ago. Um, I called the township a few months ago just to ask them about pipelines in our township. Um, and first they referred me to Protect PT, um, the person I spoke to, and then, um, I was also told about, um, a huge pipeline that runs under Route one thirty, um, out towards Jeanette. So, um, if there's an explosion in Penn Township, what is the emergency preparedness plan to keep students safe if they're at school? I'm also concerned about the heavy truck traffic during student bus transport, air contamination, and mine subsidence. Um, so for the reasons I stated tonight, um, I'm just asking that we minimize our risks by educating ourselves and having plans and systems in place. Thank you.
Okay, Christine, I wanna just, I missed this to you last time, also. Dr. Harris will, he wishes good than being okay and...
Actually, I am gonna be at the meeting that night because we have a foundation meeting going on at six, so I can come. I'm coming right after. To the, on the seventeenth.
He can get back to board, but the whole district not, said this before, not gonna get involved in any kind of situations where litigation come against them. Chief of Police, if for the safety factor, we'll get to Dr. Harris, go through the solicitor, then get us, and we'll decide.
Avoid certain routes or certain intersections that will be heavily traveled, especially near access roads. But I'm really concerned about the bus transport too.
Penn Township Police Force and the Trafford Police Force have been very cooperative when we've had any kind of situations. They've been, they've, they're, they're well trained. I feel very comfortable with them.
I don't know if parents are comfortable with it.
Well, being a young parent, I can respect that viewpoint also. Any of your board members wish to express themselves, please do so. You know, you're welcome to do it. I'm only speaking mostly for myself, but if anybody else wants to say anything, it's, uh, the floor is yours.
I would, I would just like to ask one question, and, and don't take this the wrong way, but how do you feel about when there's a ten thousand gallon tank truck of gasoline going down Route one thirty to fill the gas station?
Oh, I feel horrible about it, and that's why this heavy volume concerns me even more because of the volume of it. Um, it's one thing to have a tanker truck going through occasionally, but it's the high volume that I'm expecting to have. It's not going to be occasional. Uh, my fear is that it's going to be constant all day, every day.
I believe if you would, if you would sit and watch Route one thirty, that there is currently high volumes of heavy truck, um, flammable liquids, and, and I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's, it's there already. I mean, it's, it's there already.
I agree, and that's why we try to minimize our risks.
And, and we haven't had any complaints about that up until, you know, the, the current situation. That's, that's the only thing I, I gotta say.
Right, and I feel that if they would limit it to industrial zones, then we could reduce our risks because it would only be in certain areas and that would reduce the volume. So if we could limit it to industrial zones, obviously there's still a risk, just like there's already a risk, but, um, the volume is
But the, the highways are, are, are free, free highways. They can't restrict what traffic goes on it. If, even if it is to an industrial zone, they still gotta you, go through, use the highways to get there, and Route one thirty is a major corridor. And, and then if you go to an industrial zone out past Rams Farm or something, they're coming down one thirty and going out a country road to get to the industrial zones. I'm, I'm, or between Route twenty-two and Route one thirty.
So I'm just asking if there's a way to possibly reroute the buses, especially during certain times. I'm just saying, what can we do to help keep our kids safe as opposed to doing nothing? Because I could, I could move, and I'm choosing not to, so I'm just asking if everybody could work together as a community to try to minimize our risks and keep the kids safe. Just we should just try to do what we can instead of just saying, well, there's nothing we can do, let's do nothing.
That's never been the attitude. That's never been the attitude. Anyone else?
As far as the bus, we're also concerned. As Rich said, one thirty is a major corridor in this township. And as a school district, we're pretty strapped because, one for one, we have one school right on Route one thirty and other schools within a mile. Sunrise, where does Sunrise from Route one thirty? A mile, Level Green can't be much.
Most of our buses have to get on one thirty or one forty.
I mean, it's very hard. I understand your concern, believe me, because I, when I see trucks on the road, I always get a little weary myself as a driver, let alone my kids waiting for a, a school bus. But I, when you look at it from a logistics point of view, where do we, how do we route the buses to get them to these schools where Route one thirty, when Route one thirty is our only major corridor in this township? It's a tough situation.
Right, and I understand we can't avoid it, but I'm just asking if we can look at it and just try. Are there certain intersections that are, um, especially a threat because of disability or something? Just, maybe just try.
Yeah, and I worry about the kids who actually live on Route one thirty. If we start moving bus offs off, then they're actually forced to walk further with the, with, um, the heavier traffic. So there is a lot of logistics to be considered.
Right now, as we speak, there's a gas well being drilled and fracked ten feet out of Penn Township.
I saw a picture of that.
It's in my backyard. There was one last year drilled and fracked in my front yard. I didn't notice any increased traffic to bother me as a resident, and it was fifteen hundred feet from my front door. Now, right now, I don't notice any additional traffic out of ordinary for anything, if you had that, be it a grocery store, the nursing home across the street from my house. I'm not seeing that. I don't know if our police are seeing any incidents of further hazards and problems, but I personally live in the middle of two, one done, one being done currently, and another one being set up to be done. I'm not seeing any change in anything in my life whatsoever.
That's, that's really to me, thank you.
And that's, I would encourage you to take a look at it, because the reality of this is going on right now. It's twenty-four seven drilling and fracking right now.
I've heard, um, a lot of other things from people who live, um, near sites, um, but it does make me feel better to hear that. Thank you.
And he's a man with no.
I bet.
You know, he would, VIP in the community.
He's just, just one of the lifetime residents, been here since the fifties, grew up here, was a kid here, and watched everything grow and change, and this is another one of those growing, changing things. And I, believe me, I'm a facts guy. I'm looking. I'm, I'm hoping for all the best things, and so far, it's been pretty peaceful.
And your board members to speak?
Thank you.
I'll start. Thank you. Okay, we're gone. Entertaining motion for Treasury Report in June and July two thousand sixteen, the High School Extra-Curricular Report for the month of May and June two thousand sixteen to be approved and presented and made part of the official minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Nemeck, second by Mr. Leonard. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Payment of bills, entertaining motion to approve the payment of bills for August two thousand sixteen?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Nemeck, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manoraz. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Hold business.
Uh, we have none to see here, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lego.
You're welcome.
Okay, executive session, executive session was conducted prior to this meeting for the following matters. Personnel, including hiring professional and non-professional staff, receive legal advice on paying litigation. The board also meant to receive information on various matters, including student handbook, state funding increases, workforce development, and district enrollment figures and policy revisions. New business, athletic instructor, Dr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a few items. Moved to accept the following resignations: Marty Casper, head lead teacher at Harrison Park; Doug Kelly, seventh grade boys basketball coach at Penn Middle; Sean Cartney, ninth grade assistant boys' basketball coach and varsity boys' assistant volleyball coach; Sabrina Ober, Oberkoffler, Koffler? Uh, yearbook sponsor of Penn Middle, school effect of July twenty-first; Erica Smith, junior high girls' assistant volleyball coach, effective August first.
Uh, motion by Dr. Costello, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard, any question on motion?
Questions.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the opening of two assistant varsity baseball coaching positions, effective immediately.
Uh, motion by Dr. Costello, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nemeck, any question on motion?
Questions.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to employ the athletic and extracurricular personnel for the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year as presented to the board. Salaries will be determined in accordance with the negotiated agreement. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of the Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers from the Consville Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days.
Motion by Dr. Costello, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion? Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the list of volunteer coaches as presented to the board. All coaching volunteers must have Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers on file with the athletic curriculum.
Motion by Dr. Costello, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That'll be all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Costello. Motion passed, Mr. Kuchas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation program for the month of August two thousand sixteen according to the schedule as listed.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Um, Mr. Kuchas, second by, Mr. Nemeck, question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the re, uh, school resource officer program arena for two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen-seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuchas, second by Dr. Costello, any question on motion?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
It was nice to see our school resource officer here tonight, Officer Myers. Thank you for all that you do for the school and keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Moved to approve the Penn Trafford School District's contributions to the area libraries for two thousand sixteen, uh, seventeen as follows, as listed.
Uh, motion by Mr. Kuchas, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manoraz. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the following change order request. Uh, this was reviewed with the board last week, uh, and last minute. As listed.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchas. Uh, motion by Mr. Kuchas, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nemeck, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the purchase of a weatherbug outdoor alerting system with installation at a cost of eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Uh, motion by Mr. Kuchas, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Dr. Costello, any question on motion?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchas. Building grounds and safety, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. After having reviewed the list of substitutes, uh, I'd like to make a, a move to, uh, prove that list of substitute custodians for two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, and that copy of that list will be on file with the official minutes of this meeting.
Uh, motion by Mr. Leonard, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiation, transportation, Mississauga.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kuchasi. Moved to approve the list of bus drivers and substitutes as presented by First Student for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. A copy will be filed with the official, uh, minutes of this meeting.
Motion, Mississauga, any question, second on motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Leonard, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the SEIU contract effective July first, two thousand sixteen through June thirtieth, um, two thousand twenty, as presented to the board.
Uh, motion, Mississauga, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Before we go to number three, I just want to say I want to thank Mr. Nemeck, who headed the negotiation table, and also Mississauga, Miss Kuchas. For, Mr. Nemeck relishes negotiating.
No, he doesn't.
He, he steps, he steps forward every time. He has saved this district and his team thousands and thousands of dollars in negotiating fees. I just want to give you credit for that, Mr. Nemeck. You always take up, he does his research before, I mean, he, he's well-planned. His brother Joe told me, my brother Rich does not leave one leaf unturned, and so far, what I've seen is a very accurate statement. Again, Miss Nemeck, great job.
And I also want to thank Linda Bachman, because she actually was our SEIU. This was her first contract she got to negotiate. Are you gonna be able to negotiate another one someday?
She absolutely will.
She will, and she put, they put a lot of time into it, and I really appreciate it.
Okay. Number three, Mississauga.
All right. Moved to approve the renewal of administrative contracts for Dr. Matthew Harris, superintendent; Scott Inglaze, assistant superintendent; and Brett Lego, director of business affairs, effective July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, motion, Mississauga, second by Mr. Leonard, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'd like to say something, and, um, I will leave it up to the board. I want to, it's, uh, our pleasure to work with these three gentlemen. Um, our superintendent, uh, Dr. Harrison, Mr. Ingles, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Lego, I want to say, uh, great job, great effort. Uh, people work very hard. You get back to the board, you communicate everything with the board. Mr. Lego's helped us get through the pit and the pension mess that the state stuck us with, and he's done an outstanding job. And Dr. Harrison, Mr. Ingles, even though they, at minimum, uh, central administration experience, they give us a hundred and ten percent. Every time they come, they forward, they're always very, very thorough with us. I'll leave it up to the board members, which to say anything.
Yeah, I, I say congratulations for all three of you, you earned the, uh, the, uh, additional years. Uh, I'm glad you guys are in place, uh, and you make our jobs a lot easier, so congratulations to you and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I'm pleased with the team effort we've been experiencing also.
Ladies and gentlemen, how about a round of applause? I think it's appropriate.
As I said, Jim, if anybody else wants to say anything, anybody else?
I was gonna just do a quick, um, thank you to the school board for the reappointment, and the last time I did it, I read a three-page letter and everyone. And we also had a room full of people, because there was a group of people coming to have a question that night, so I won't do that this time. But I have to tell you, it's, um, I, I, this last couple of years, just like I said in my end-of-the-year letter for Patrick's graduation, it just went by in a blink of an eye, and it's the same thing. It was a quick blink, but boy, did I enjoy it. It was a lot of fun, and each and every day, no matter what happens the night before, the phone calls you receive, or the late-night meetings, I still get up excited and happy, and I'm like, okay, what's today gonna bring? And I contribute that to working for a great school board. I have a great staff that works at the schools in all areas. My teachers, my custodians, my PCAs, my secretaries, the administrators, everybody does an excellent job, and they always do it for the kids. And that's the best part of working in this position. It's something that you do that actually affects children. So I really appreciate being here. I'm thankful for the commitment of this, um, community I receive, the parents, the amount of volunteers that we have. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to raise a family. I always feel safe, so I'm just very proud and very blessed to be wearing green and gold, so thank you.
Well, I'll say the same thing. I'm not gonna be as wrong with you.
I tried to be short. I even cut off two sentences about me saving a cat from a tree.
Hopefully you have another four years after this one, it'll be shorter. But I, I want to say too, thank you to the board. You guys have always been very supportive of everything that, uh, we've asked you for. Uh, you've just been great to work with, you know, and I, I hear stories about some other boards, other districts that don't work the way you guys do, and you guys, uh, it's a team effort. You communicate, you sometimes disagree, but you always kind of way, walk away with, uh, you know, a good attitude about something and, and come to consensus and work with us very well. I was raised here, I was a teacher here, a principal here, and I love being here, and I couldn't, uh, couldn't be more grateful for this position, and, and I hope to retire here, so. If you guys would, uh, wanted a ten-year contract, I, I don't know.
I just want to know if you're, you're ready for your next renovation project, that's.
Well.
People don't, people.
There's no money, so we don't have to worry about that.
People don't know what, what Scott goes through with coordinating with the contractors and, uh, construction manager. He, he, it's, it's a lot on his plate.
Lot of headaches.
Lot of headaches, but he handles it well. He's the best person for it that we got.
He'll be done with it in another month or two, so. But, uh, thank you, Dr. Harris, too. He's always been very supportive and lets, lets me do my job, and, uh, great guy to work for, so thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
And your board members, which to speak?
I have one more comment. I shouldn't be ashamed to admit this, but I burn the midnight oil a lot, and I don't think there's been ti, a time yet, and I do this regularly, as they could say. I call these guys on the cell phone, they always answer the phone, weekends and evenings for me, because I'm home a lot, going through things and thinking things over, and they always, they always pick up the phone and answer, and here's the nice part, not only do they answer, they usually have the answer. And I really, that, that means a lot to me, the team effort we're in. Because right now, with renovation, I'm chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and that's a little bit of a challenge in time, they took, but they've taken all the challenge out of it for us. It's been great.
Well, speaking of burning midnight oil, how many emails have we all received from Matt at like twelve fifteen at night or twelve thirty at night? I'm probably the only one still off, though.
You always respond, though, so you go right away. This is great. It's like.
You go along with it, Tommy.
Yeah.
I'm no reason, I don't know. I'm a very late-night person, but I can't believe how late that works.
Answer every email and question before I go to bed, so no matter what, I try to just respond to it at night.
Well, here's the difference. You start work at seven, I think.
Yeah.
I start work at eight.
Okay.
You get up, you get up earlier than me.
I'm not mistaken, I think it's six, right?
In the summer, it's six, and I know I'm part of my, my custodians, but we're probably feeling it, because it's hard.
And he's not getting much sleep.
But I wanted to appreciate, too, the fact of being part of a team. I think the board saw that there's a team effort there between these three gentlemen uh, to treat them as a team approach as opposed to individuals. Wonderful individuals, but even better when they work together as a team. We're fortunate to have a team approach, so our compliments.
Thank you, and, and again, I, I thank the board also. Uh, I was blessed fourteen years ago that, uh, you selected me to be your business manager. Uh, it's been a long time, because the only person at the table at that time was Nick. Everybody else has come, Phil came a month after I did. Uh, Jay was a, was a colleague at the time, and, uh, Sean was the only other one, I think, uh, who was with the district at the time, so uh, it's been a, it's been a great time. Uh, it is a great board that we have. It's a great district that we have. Uh, Scott and Matt are great to work with. We really do work as a team. We can talk things out. May not always agree, but we, you know, come to conclusions that are in the best interest of the district. Uh, the support that you provide us is invaluable. It, uh, we couldn't do what we do without your support and guidance, uh, and I'll always be thankful for that. Uh, unlike Scott, who needs a ten-year contract, however, this may be the last go-around for me. We'll see what it's like after another four years, but, uh, I look forward to, uh, serving out, uh, the next four years, retiring as a member of the Penn Trafford School District, so thanks again.
And a special shout-out to Greg, who doesn't need a contract renewed, but he's a member of our team as well, and he's always out there looking for ways to help kids, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Mississauga, thank you. All right, food service, Dr. Trey.
Let's see what's exciting in the world of food service, Mr. President. Uh, moved to approve the list of cafeteria personnel for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year as presented by Airmark Education with a copy filed with the official minutes of, uh, this meeting.
Uh, motion by Dr. Trey, is second on motion? Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Uh, moved to adopt the following resolution. It's a standard resolution by the school, Board of School Directors for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year with regard to the free and reduced lunch program as listed.
Uh, motion by Dr. Trey, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Uh, moved to approve Turner Dairy as the milk supplier for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
Uh, motion by Dr. Trey, is second on motion? By Mr. Leonard, any question on motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. First, on correct time, Mr. Stovall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Moved that the following administrators be designated official raiders, uh, of profess, professional personnel in the Penn Trafford School District for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Dr. Matthew Harris, Mr. Scott Inglaze, Mr. Greg Caricia, Mr. Tony Aquilio, Mr. Greg Cappuccioni, Mrs. Karen Coynor, Mr. Daniel Donapoli, Mr. Joseph A. Marassid, Mr. Jim Simpson, Mr. Roger Sullivan, and Mr. Jeff Schwartz.
Uh, motion by Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Costello, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the list of substitute teachers and support personnel for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Motion by Dr. Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Costello, any question?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to approve the teacher assignments for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year as recommended by the administration. A copy of the assign, assignments will be filed with the official minutes. Administration is further authorized to notify teachers of their permanent assignments in accordance with the negotiated agreement.
Uh, motion by Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Uh, moved to approve the, the following leave request. Claire Donnelly, grade two at McCullough Learning Sabbatical for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Beth Caswell will be the long-term self.
And motion by Mr. Kuchas, Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to accept the following resignations: Tammy Ross, special ed classroom, structural ed, effective immediately; Erica Smith, paraprofessional, effective August first, two thousand sixteen; and Stephanie Trautling, grade three teacher at Sunrise Estates, effective October twenty-third, two thousand sixteen.
Motion by Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Costello, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Moved to deploy the following personnel effective August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Uh, teacher Bethany Smythe, starting at, uh, level B, step two, salary forty-three thousand one hundred dollars; and, uh, student learning assistants at salary of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Mackenzie McGuire, Harrison Park, and Ashley, Matt, help me out.
Ullison. Ullison.
Ullison at level three.
Uh, motion by Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manoraz, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Um, Bethany would have been here tonight. She's in Myrtle Beach for the week, um, so, and it was kind of funny, because she goes, should I come, should I fly back? And I said, no. So she, but it was a nice offer, but I, I'm not that mean of a person to work with, so.
Okay, moved to approve the student handbook for the Penn Trafford High School for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year as presented to the board.
Uh, motion, Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Uh, then I have a motion to move to, uh, approve the promotion of Amy Kelly to the position of high school assistant principal, effective August ninth, two thousand sixteen, with a base salary of ninety-two thousand dollars. Said promotion being a twelve-month position with terms and conditions as set forth in the Act ninety-three compensation pack plan.
Motion by Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Costello, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Amy is here tonight. Can you stand up and have a? Just a thank you would be great.
Thank you so much. This is the greatest opportunity. I appreciate it. I will do my very best. And as you all know, I lead green and gold as well, so I will do my best to do the job I'm asked to do. I appreciate very much.
Amy, how, how many years have you worked here as a substitute and a teacher altogether?
Altogether, twenty years.
Twenty years?
Amy worked extensively with, uh, reading, uh, the M L A teachers with that curriculum, and, uh, should continue that at the high school and and elementary schools as well, so that's one of the qualities that she has that we're really impressed with, so. Good luck to you, Amy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And we might want to approve her as a raider now, because I kind of thought about that after we.
You had to evaluate.
We did section one, so do you want to do that tonight, or?
We should do it now.
It goes back to Mr. Mark.
Uh, you could do it, the, the, probably the best way is simply do a separate motion now.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay. That's Marty.
Yes.
So, uh, let me move to, uh, move that the following administrator be designated official raiders of professional personnel in the Penn Trafford School District for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, and that administrator is Miss Amy Kelly.
Uh, motion by Mr. Stovall, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Costello, any question on motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Policy implementation legislative, panel two, Mr. Manorazo.
Hmm, I lost my place. There we go. All right, I'd like to, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Like to move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, June the sixth, twenty sixteen.
Uh, motion by Mr. Manorazo, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuchas, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Also like to move to give final approval to board policy about the investment of district funds, food services, and administrative regulations, public notification and civil rights complaint procedure, and professional standards for food service personnel.
Uh, motion by Mr. Manorazo, is second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemeck, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Would also like to move to approve an exception to our policy on foreign exchange students. Align the district to accept four foreign exchange students for the twenty sixteen-seventeen school year rather than the maximum of three students as per the policy.
Motion by Mr. Manorazo, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nemeck, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And finally, to move to approve the addendum to PTARC's intergovernmental agreement of cooperation. This addendum amends the bylaws to provide the qualifications for appointment to the commission.
Uh, motion by Mr. Manorazo, is second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nemeck, can you question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And Miss Kelly, I will tell your godson tomorrow morning and his mother about your promotion. You're welcome. Uh, tax insurance says, Mr. Nemeck?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemeck. Social report, Mr. Brungo.
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
And, uh, how are you doing, of course, I guess, with the PTA president, Mr. Rieh.
Uh, first, I'd like to applaud you guys on giving those three men an extension. I think it was very well deserved, very much earned, and they're, uh, they're fair and good people to work with, so I know, I appreciate it.
It's very nice you say that, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
And I look forward to a good year. I'll be glad to get back to work.
All right. Okay, anything else for a good order?